Begin the recording. Excellent, okay. Good evening, I am now calling the Tuesday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. The time is seven oh three. Please note that in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five three subsection E subsection three, this meeting is being held by teleconference only because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when Commissioner staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considerate video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District League Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Excuse me, Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren.
Present.
Vice President Vaughn. Commissioner Kearney.
Here.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Present.
Commissioner Spreen.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
And we have six Commissioners present. And for the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters consultant and staff roll call. Acting Fire Chief Glass.
Present, good evening.
Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Captain Gluhem.
Here.
Integrated Hazardous Fuels Reduction Consultant Barnett.
Here.
General Manager Logan.
Here.
Lead Deputy County Council Chelliden. Chris, you might be on mute.
Chris, you there?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, Cert Program Analyst BB.
Present.
Independent Contractor for Special Events and Community Education and Outreach and Constantine.
Here.
Thank you. And Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council Managing Director Rendler.
Present.
Great, thank you. Presenters, Consultants, and Staff are all accounted for.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I thank everyone for attending this Tuesday evening. Fall has finally come. It feels cool and damp out there. And, you know, I can't believe we're wrapping up two thousand and twenty-one already. It is, it has gone by very quickly. I want to thank the staff for pulling together the agenda and to continue to operate in this hybrid COVID environment, you know, we were talking about prior to the meeting, you know. It's been, it's been quite a journey to get to this point where this is now the norm. When we started, this was, you know, all ad hoc, everyone was, was working to pull it together. And now we're operating fairly smoothly, and I attribute that to the staff. So thank you, everyone, for making this happen. But I do miss getting together as, as a group together to have these meetings. Hopefully, some point, we'll be able to do that. We have a good agenda this evening. Important things around staff and working with Prisima Hills Water District and with the, in the fuel breaks and looking for the, you said about the update on the fuel breaks. So with no further ado, we'll move on to public comment, item three. Public comment, persons wishing to address Commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the Commission is not able to undertake extended discussions or actions tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the Commission President to impose shorter time limits. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? Right. I'm not seeing any hands raised or voices raised. All right, hearing none. We will now move to item four, the consent calendar and changes to the order of the agenda. Moving on to item four, A through H. Are there any comments from the staff on the agenda to changes to the order of the agenda or items in the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Board President Warren. I'd like to recommend that we continue item five A, which is a memo report, and five B, which is a mission moment video to the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's the first time I've said that formally, to that Commission meeting. And then also continue item twelve A and item twelve B, and that's on the hydrant reports to the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Commission meeting. For item twelve, there are no updates at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's to move. We have to, we have to write that down so that Cory can get that into the, the motion. Or the change. Let's just change the agenda.
Yeah, so changes to the agenda are to continue five A and B mission moment to the January meeting. And there are, I guess we are also continuing twelve A and B because there's no updates at this time. So it's in essence, I guess, deleting both from this current agenda, continuing until January.
Okay. All right. So any other comments about changes to the agenda from the Commissioners? Do we accept? County Council Chelliden, do we change the agenda like this? Do we have to vote on them as a Commission?
You can do, you can do it by consensus. You don't, you don't need to take a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's take the, the changes to the agenda and then we'll take, do the consent calendar. So at this point, we have two changes to the the consent calendar, or excuse me, to the agenda. The five B one in this, in my notes here was potentially to move to item, to agenda item ten. Is that still, we still want to do that?
Um, yes, five B one would go to item ten.
Okay, so we've actually got five changes to the agenda. Five A and B are going to January. Five B one is going to go to item ten on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Chair Warren, just for a point of clarification, does that mean that that's, that item's going to be heard concurrently with item ten then?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the subtle mountain firewise community recognition update will be, will be moved, will be addressed concurrently with item ten.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're looking for consent from the Commission on making these changes to the agenda. Any objection from the Commission?
No.
All right. Then we are, then we have consent from the Commission to move forward with as proposed. All right, so we have changes to the agenda. Keep me honest, Cory, as I stumble through this moving forward, as you're shifting the chairs around on me. Now let's talk about the consent calendar, which is items A through H. Any changes or updates, General Manager Logan, on the consent calendar that we need to talk about?
No.
All right. Are there any questions from the Commission on the consent calendar items?
No.
All right. I will now entertain a motion. Will the Commission make the motion?
Excuse me, I thought Alan had his hand. Oh, I'm sorry, just applause, never mind. I thought it was a.
Okay.
We're not at that point yet, though.
Right, I'll call for public comment in a moment. Yeah. I will now entertain a motion while the Commission are making the motion and the Commissioner is seconding the motion. Please state their name for the benefit of the recording. This is for adopting the consent calendar items A through H.
Kavita Tonka, I move that we approve the consent calendar at A to H.
Thank you, Kavita.
Nice, and we'll second.
Thank you, George. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on these items? Alan, I see you have your hand up. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. I have a question with regards to the financial statements. I note that we are now one-third of the way through the fiscal year and the project and programs expenditures are at a hundred and one thousand dollars per budget of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We spent one-seventh of the budget in the first in the first one-third of the year. I'm curious to understand why we thought we would spend seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars and yet have only been able to spend one hundred and one thousand dollars and what part of the programs not being accomplished as expected and what can be done to correct this problem if it is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, that was not specific to any item on the explicit, the consent counter. So, but yeah, so, so I think, thank you, Alan. I'll take that back and I'll talk with Jay about that item, okay? Any additional public comments? Alan, did you re-raise your hand?
Yes, I did. My comment is specific to item number four C on the consent agenda, which is the financial statements, which will be approved. I guess without discussion, if you do it as part of the consent calendar. Sorry, sorry for asking a secondary question. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the statement is the statement. So I think the question, Alan, is, is that, I think we need to do some analysis of where we are against our burn down, against our plan of the year, fiscal plans. We need to go back and talk about that as a staff to get the answer for that. Okay. All right, any further public comment? All right. Hearing no additional comment, we will now move to a vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes, except to, I, I accept as to items for A and for B, to which I abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Sherlock.
Uh, yes, except I need to abstain from the October minutes also, which would be for A.
And Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
All right, and the motion passes six to zero with one absent, and we have Commissioner Kearney abstaining on four A and B, and Commissioner Sherlock abstaining on four A.
All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, we've pulled five A and five B, and we've moved five B one to item ten, and we've pulled items twelve A and B as a result of our discussion. All right, so that means we'll move to item six in the agenda. Item six A and B are the various documents submitted to by the District of the County. Six C is information about the LaFco County Wide Fire Services Review and the Santa Clara County Comprehensive Fire Study. General Manager Logan, please provide the reports.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, President Warren. On item six A, you'll find in the attachments or in the materials, the October monthly report to FGOC and the Hewlett Committees of the County Board of Supervisors. And these two reports conclude the twelve-month of reporting of progress made to achieve the management audit recommendations that were approved by the Board of Supervisors on October sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. So I think this represents a nice milestone for the district that the twelve months' reporting has concluded. And the attachment also provides the Los Altos Hills County Fire District cover letter, the monthly report, and the slides. And the slides address district achievements for each of these recommendations. So the slides were pretty thoroughly put together. I hope you have the opportunity to review, to review those materials. On item six B, this is the attach, these attachments are the cover letter and the final management audit report for Los Altos Hills County Fire District's twelve-month audit review and, and progress to attain the recommendations to FGOC and Hewlett and the report presented to the Board of Supervisors on November the second. Now, what management audit concluded in their review of the twelve months voted based on our review of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District actual spending, its actual contracting, its use of county council for its legal services, its adoption of approved record-keeping policies and practices, and the elimination of its private tree program in favor of a more aggressive effort to mitigate severe fire risk. All of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District audit recommendations, as approved by the Board of Supervisors, have been implemented. I would now like to review the memo report in the packet to explain a new twelve-month review of district procurement records. And I'm in communication with Management Audit Division, have been for the last couple of weeks, to work out the procedures for this new twelve-month review process of procurement records. And to that, you'll find in your packet a memorandum report from me that lays out the background of the October sixth meeting and then goes to the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting where FGOC directed management audit to continue a twelve-month review of procurement records and then the discussion of how that's going to occur. And so we're setting up the, the process right now with shared file drives for management audit to have access to our records, and they will be reviewing those records as the records accumulate in those shared file drives and will give a progress report or an off-agenda report to FGOC June of two thousand and twenty-two, and this will be a twelve-month process. So I think that the memorandum report in your packet pretty well explains this, and that's my report on items six A and six B. Since they are together as one set of information, I'll be glad to take any questions or, or answer any questions at this time, and then I'll move on to six C.
Great. Any questions on six A and six B? For the Commissioners? Any comments from the public? Alan?
And I'm having difficulty keeping up, so I apologize if I'm not commenting on the right item. This is a new item that's been added to the, added just today to the agenda. I'm curious as to what is a off-agenda report? And if someone could provide a little bit more explanation as to why this additional year of review by the management audit organization has been added. Thank you.
I don't know that I have an explanation as to why an additional twelve months, other than that was what was requested by one of the supervisors and then was approved by the Board of Supervisors for that review to take place. We just want to make sure that our procurement and our records of procurement are properly done. I think that there were questions in the past around the fact that our vendors, sometimes who are third-party administrators for us, are doing bidding, and the district didn't have copies of those bidding or RFP records. And so we set up shared file drives to do that, and I'm working carefully with Fire Safe Council and also our engineer consultant to make sure those records are downloaded into the shared file drives and then downloaded as a district records for permanent retrieval and keeping. And that's the process, I believe, responding to Mr. Epstein's questions, that we're trying to resolve and show a track record of that good effort and that, that really good infrastructure with our records. It's very important that we do that. So that's my interpretation of what's occurring, and I think it's, it's a pretty important factor. It's going to take time, effort from the district, but we're used to that, and, you know, we're, we're complying as best we can. As to an off-agenda report, I think I'd ask County Council Chris Chelliden, Lead Deputy County Council. Chris, could you give us some information about off-agenda reports?
Sure. Oftentimes, the Board of Supervisors will request an off-agenda report on a particular item, and essentially what that means is a written report back to the board rather than putting it on a future agenda for purposes of having a Brown Act meeting to discuss it. So essentially, it's typically a report back in written format that's sent to all the board members that doesn't appear on a public agenda. There's no discussion among the board members in compliance with the Brown Act. So it's relatively common at the county for there to be off-agenda reports. They're typically, in almost all cases, public documents. And so in this case, the off-agenda report will be essentially a status update to the, to the Jay, I can't remember if it goes to FGOC or to the full board. Yeah, I, so it would go back to FGOC. And then typically, if the FGOC or the board wanted to agendize the item after receipt of the off-agenda report, they would do that.
I believe that, as I understand it, it would go to FGOC first for discussion there and then to the full Board of Supervisors.
Most likely, most likely, yes.
Yeah.
But I do want to emphasize, I do want to emphasize that both at the committee level and at the board, they were consent items, and the point of the consent item was that the district was in full compliance with the audit and had completed all of its obligations under the audit. There happened to be a follow-up request on this one particular issue, but I don't want to make sure that that's not lost, that the overall finding was that the audit was completed and had been complied with.
Correct. And as I understand also from the Management Audit Division, when I've exchanged communication with them, is they don't, do not consider this an audit, but they consider it a review of the district's processes. I don't know if that makes a lot of difference, but that was clarified with me, that it was not an audit. Just a review, opportunity to continue vigilance of the district's processes where it's retaining its records and particularly when it comes to bids, RFPs, and selection of contractors. Very important. So those are my remarks. I hope that is helpful information to you.
Very good. So Jay and staff, I want to thank you for doing what you've done in the last twelve months, getting us to this point in the audit process, to come out with the audit team saying that, you know, that the district is now complied with all of the audit recommendations, and they, they have effectively closed it from all their, all their points they raised a year ago. Thank you for leading that effort with the staff and team to get us to this point. That was not a small task. It was a lot of work, and I want to thank you and the team for doing that. I mean, a year ago, I didn't know how we were going to get through it, but you led us through it, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you to the Commissioners who were at every FGOC meeting. We've always had a Commissioner or two representing the district at FGOC and also at Hewlett. That was very important, I think, just from, from the optics and the perspective that the Commissioners were there, listening, attending, and taking it all very seriously. And I think in these last twelve months, truly, we've, we've reorganized, reformed, recreated a district that has become very, you know, very helpful to his community and has a very good mission through the strategic planning, the CWPP, all of the various infrastructure parts we've put together, and really kudos to the Commission to doing that, and also to County Council for being there all along the way to give us guidance. It was truly a team effort, President Warren, truly was.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, six C, just very quickly. There's been a lot going on there. The LaFco meeting was of the TAC group, and as you know, TAC is Technical Advisory Committee, is a combination of fire chiefs and also of city manager representatives. And that was held, I think, about a week ago. So as you know, Carl Cahill was on the TAC group, and he was the city manager of Los Altos Hills, no longer city manager, and so the alternate, who was in place of Carl Cahill, is now on the TAC group, and that's Ed Chikata, who's the city manager from Palo Alto. So I just wanted to mention that. And then the Matrix Group, who's doing the County Wide Fire Service Review, had two town halls on November fourth and tenth, three sessions each, and we had representation at each one of those meetings. And just listen to public comment and listen to how those meetings proceeded. I am being a Santa Clara County resident. I weighed in on one of them as a resident to participate in the meeting and also to, to take the survey that was provided. So that's my update on those, and hopefully, if you had any input or you listened to those meetings, that, that, that's helpful to know how this county-wide fire study review is going from both groups. Thank you. Those, that's the end of my comments on item six A, B, and C.
Very good. Any questions from, comments from Commissioners? Any questions, comments from the public? All right, hearing none. We'll now move to item seven, the Chief Fire Chief Report. Item seven A and seven B are the reports. Acting Fire Chief Glass, please provide the reports.
All right, good evening, Commissioners, staff, and members of the public. Can everyone see the screen? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. This is our standard monthly report. No significant events to report, thankfully. We'll highlight October. We're slightly above where we would have been in two thousand and twenty. Again, we're coming out of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Two thousand and twenty was an off-year. So six hundred and eighty-two calls so far this year. October, we saw a spike with a number of eighty-eight calls total for the month of October. The distribution looks consistent with peak calls coming in around lunchtime and then tapering back off into the evening hours. You can see we had a lot of different units covering the Los Altos Hills Fire District during the month of October. This was to accommodate EMS, annual EMS training and some of the other ongoing training as we come out of COVID. So you can see we had Engine seventy-one, Engine seventy-two. Both of those units are from Cupertino. They were on move-up assignments to cover the district, and it looks like Engine seventy-one did not meet its response time on one call, but averaged in to the entire eighty-eight calls. We're still looking really, really good on our urban response code three calls, coming in at five minutes. And our rural densities, again, we're looking really good. Eleven fifty-nine is the total time we're looking to shoot for there. And again, we're, we're close to six minutes and forty-three seconds for thirty of those calls. The calls that are not reflected there would be your code two calls, so those are the ones without red lights and sirens that the engines are responding to. The breakdown of calls is reflected in the pie chart. As usual, we're seeing about forty percent EMS calls. That's a little low. Normally, we're in the fifty to sixty range for the district. We did see a spike in service calls. We also had a large storm, so that's where we're attributing some of these calls, the spike in calls, was that what they called the atmospheric river. A lot of trees down, a lot of wires down, a lot of service calls there. So that's the spike. November, excuse me, October is the start of Fire Prevention Month into the first weeks of November. So you saw us out and about doing some stuff within the community. I'm not totally sure. We contacted one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven people, so I'll look into why that number seems high. The report that I have in front of me shows four hundred and forty seven total programs. Several were community outreach, emergency preparedness, fire apparatus, touch a truck event that occurred at Almani Fire Station, and a couple of visits to some schools, St. Nicholas, Gardner-Bullis, and let's see, we had a while-in urban interface property inspection with one of our crews. So with that, I am happy to take any questions, and I guess I better show you the, the map. I lost my Zoom screen. There it is. So you can take a look and see the distribution of calls. Again, what we like to see here is no red. Red is indicative of dispatched for fire. You can see we ran some in the city of Los Altos, but none in the fire district, which was really good. And I'm happy to take any questions before I move on to the Palo Alto report.
Any questions for the Fire Chief? All right, hearing none. Chief, let's move to seven B.
Okay, seven B. October marked the end of our Palo Alto Station Eight staffing agreement. During the month of October, they responded to six total calls. You can see that several of those were EMS calls. It looks like a service call canceled en route to one, a wires down, and a fire alarm. In discussions with the General Manager and the President, we decided to shut down staffing and not extend it into November because of the heavy rainy season that we experienced, the Atmospheric River event. There is opportunities there to keep it going in the contract for another two weeks, but we felt it was probably a low wildfire risk at that point, and so we down-staffed the unit. During the Atmospheric River event, we did up-staff additional apparatus. We up-staffed Engine six seventy-five in Los Altos to be available with two personnel to respond to these low-level service call events. With that, I'm happy to take any questions as it relates to Palo Alto Station Eight or the staffing. I will say overall, I think it was a successful partnership between the Hills, Central Fire, and Palo Alto. I look forward to being able to bring that back next year. I look forward to being able to bring that back next year. Uh, working very closely with Palo Alto as they address their staffing concerns. Uh, we felt a little ripple of that. Uh, with this, uh, it was a heavy lift for their agency to put, put an extra engine on the street. So I'll be working very closely with Chief Blackshire and Palo Alto and seeing what options we can bring back before next fire seasons to address that, uh, staffing consideration. Uh, staffing is a problem for, for all fire departments right now throughout California in hiring, um, qualified workforce. The process to onboard firefighters is close to nine months and it's, uh, it's a heavy lift for a lot of agencies. So we also are experiencing, uh, you know, some difficulties. We have about 20 open positions right now. We currently have an academy of 10 and another one scheduled of 12 to fix that, uh, but it does take time. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Chief Glass. Any questions from the commissioners?
Terry has a question.
Terry, go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks, Chief Glass. Um, how do the response times, um, from eight, uh? Um, relate to your expectations?
Um, the station eight is, it's, um, it's a unique station because it's kind of in the park and up on the hill. So it's, it's difficult to, uh, have those crews respond quickly out of there. It, from the time you get the alarm to the time you get to foothill, I'm excusing a page mill. Uh, it's, it's almost a minute. So, uh, I would, I would love to see the response times be faster. I mean, that, I think we always want that, but for those residents in that sphere that are covered. It's significantly faster than waiting from a unit coming from El Monte. And so, uh, for the six to eight calls that they responded to in that month, the people that they impacted definitely saw, uh, service faster. Than if they had to wait for the service to either come from Palo Alto Station Two, which is oftentimes browned out. Or from, uh, El Monte Fire Station, uh. You know, the distance to travel there can be, uh, in excess of 10 minutes to some of those areas that are covered by Station Eight. So, uh, while we always shoot to be as fast as we possibly can. Uh, it's a station that we are borrowing from the city of Palo Alto, for lack of a better term. And, uh, so we take the good with the bad.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, Alan, you have a question for the fire chief?
Yes, thank you. Fire chief's question about, um, there were very few responses from that station. The question I, I have is. As you know, during the fire season, there's a program to, uh, add an additional. Fire truck, uh, to the Los Altos Hills County Fire District's service. Um, would it be, uh, a better use and less demanding on the staff? Uh, to, to staff that facility only on high fire days as opposed to all, all days? Uh, and, uh, how would you, um, assess the, I guess, the risk benefits associated with, uh, a change like that? And a question not on, uh, the Palo Alto Station, but on your additional, um. Battalion manager related to Wooey, if, if you could give an update as to what's happening there, I would, I would very much appreciate hearing. Thanks so much.
Okay, I'll, um, if it's okay with the president, I'll begin to answer Epstein's questions.
Yeah, please.
Um, so I'll, I'll start with, um. Uh, the, the ability for us to staff what we call the mode staffing, which is the additional type three wildland firefighting engine at Almani Station. Uh, we, we have that still available in our agreement with Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Uh, we chose to actually staff it. Uh, I believe it was two days during, during this, uh, last fire season. Those are typically red, uh, red flag days. Um, so that, that's still available and that is a partnership between us and the hills. And I'm happy to, um, you know, entertain staffing that anytime the district wants it staffed. Or anytime we reach out to the district and anticipate a need for that staffing. Um, to answer your second question, would staffing impacts be reduced by only staffing the, the engine at Palo Alto Station Eight on red flag days? Absolutely. Um, but what that would have meant was only staffing it two days, the entire fire season, uh, in 2021. And I think, and again, I won't speak for the, the commission here, but what I took was that they wanted. An additional engine all fire season long to provide not just wildfire protection, but to respond to EMS events. Uh, the all risk, all hazard, uh, functionality of that, that a unit of that nature provided to constituents of Los Altos Hills adjacent to the, the foothills park. Uh, so again, that would be at the direction of the, uh, the fire commission. Uh, the, the third topic, and I hope that I'm getting these all for you. Um, the update on our battalion chief assigned to wildfire, uh, resilience, pre-fire management and wildfire resilience. Uh, has been, uh, very actively involved and engaged with, um. Chief Barnett and his participation, uh, with the hills as a consultant on planning and, uh, outlining. Different fuel, uh, modifications and treatments and fuel break projects, including the big one that's going on with Mid Penn and. Uh, some of the, uh, parks. I know Chief Matheson has been involved with, uh, several of the fire safe council, uh, individuals on looking for, uh, projects to work on within the central fire district. So that program is, is growing. Uh, we have been in talks with Santa Clara County Parks to try to secure location at a parks facility. In order to, to house a potential fuels crew in the future. Uh, and we've been in some very preliminary talks on being able to, uh, seek staffing for that. We have a job spec, we have a pay scale within central fire, uh, to be able to take to the board for, uh, approval. And that'd be our board of, uh, directors, which is the board of supervisors. So he's been actively engaged in working in those, uh, projects. And we've gone ahead and purchased a chipper and we begin, begin, uh, conducting some fuels modification and fuels, uh, reduction projects in the highway nine corridor. And, uh, in the Lexington Basin area. And with that, I'm happy to, to take any more questions or clarify anything, but I believe I, I hit the three questions Mr. Epstein had.
Great. Thanks, Chief Glass. All right. Any further public comments? All right, hearing none. Thanks, Chief Glass, for the update. Um, and look forward to, um, you know, next 2022 staffing station eight. So, um. Thank you for all your effort on that. Um, all right, well now move. Well, then moved to item eight, the general manager report. Items A, A through C are the reports. General Manager Logan, please provide the reports.
Yes, thank you. Uh, can everyone see my screen? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good enough. Uh, so the cover slide, this is the know your zone month and tribute to Zone Haven. And then moving to update events and activities, uh, those are just there for your information. Um, the Zone Haven webinars, we've had two of them, three more upcoming in, um. Uh, the end of this year and then, oh no, I guess that's into next year. Uh, wildfire preparedness, the wildfire preparedness fair you'll hear about. But we thank Supervisor Semidion, Mayor Tonka, Council Member Schmidt Swan and Mock for attending along with the partners, uh, district partners, search volunteers and residents. As well, uh, very, very good first year, uh, event and very grateful for that. Um, we've talked about the board of supervisors review of the 12 month audit. And then next is the presentation of the community, uh, presentation was done at the Los Altos Hills Emergency Communication Committee this, this month. Someone from staff always attends that meeting. And, uh, also staff attended the six sessions of countywide operations study, town hall, fire protection of the county. And, uh, then I think the more compelling. Hearing that I attended was under California Department of Insurance and, uh, Dave Barnett also attended that. And that was a Zoom conference and basically it was a discussion, public discussion of mitigation in rating plans and wildfire risk models. And it was a lot of various companies from around the state talking about. The technology that allows for identification of high risk areas. And the mitigation of hazards that can go on. And would there be any kind of incentive from the insurance industry to recognize that? And lower rates, be sure that rates in areas that do this kind of mitigation are not canceled. Or that, uh, policies are, are provided. So it was a very interesting and very compelling, uh, conversation amongst the state of California with the, uh, insurance commissioner. And then we have a commission vacancy that will be coming up and the informational ad are posted in the town crier and the daily news in November and December. So we're getting the word out there. Moving on to the second slide, sorry, wanted to talk about now a topic that's come before the commission on a number of occasions. And that's, uh, the district hydrants and the acoustic leak sensor caps. And just to give you some background, um, there was initial discussions between the district and Parisma Hills Water District. For an agreement for Parisma to remove the district hydrant pumper caps. And install a acoustic leak sensor cap and a pilot study on certain district owned fire hydrants. That conversation stopped kind of mid-year as, uh, then the, the staff was dealing with the management audit and various, uh. Uh, monthly reporting that was occurring with management audit. Now we're got some time and want to go back and revisit the acoustic leak sensor caps. And to do that, there's a recommended plan of action. And that is, I've been able to confirm with, with, uh, county fire department that they have no operational concerns. If these leak sensor caps are installed in place of the pumper caps. And a, a agreement to be developed and signed between the parties and that draft agreement is now in the review process. So that's kind of a quick update, uh, President Warren. I, I noticed Steve Jordan was on the phone. Invite him if he would like to make some comments. Because I think this is, you know, a very important, uh, a- aspect for him also in Parisma Hills Water District.
Right. Now that we're on the, we're on the, thank you, Jay. Now that we're on the topic, Steve, um, is Representative of Parisma Hills, any comments?
Um, yeah, well, yes. Uh, first, thank you very much. I appreciate that, uh, that this is coming up, uh, now. And we look forward to, to working with you. Uh, I. I mainly want to reinforce what we've seen in the rest of the county where, um. There's a million customers for San Jose water. They're finding 25 leaks a month. That, that's before their breaks. They mostly, they started as pinholes. Um, you know, in, in the cast iron pipe, at least they start as pinholes and, uh. You know, in older pipes. And so if you catch them when they're pinholes, when they start making noise, then you, you know, you don't lose. Water, you don't lose fire service and you don't damage the road, all of those things. So, and they're cheaper to repair, but it's, it's really more. If you can repair them before the water goes out of service, that's much better for everybody. So we. We are looking forward to this and, um, and that's, I just want to, want to thank, uh, the commission and, uh, and, uh, gen- general manager Logan for. Let's, you know, getting on with this now. Thanks.
Yeah. And thank you. And I wanted to say too, that it's very important, the benefit to the district. That with, uh, as, as Mr. Jordan is pointing out, more stability in the water system, which puts more stability into the hydrants. And that's our end user are the firefighters that use those hydrants. And we want them to have the best circumstances with the water system as possible. So I'm hoping that the data that comes from the leak detector caps can also be analyzed and used by the fire department. So they're better, better able to understand how that system is working for, for the better use of the end user, which is the firefighter who uses the fire hydrant. So.
That's a great, a good question. I'm not sure what that data is other than the sound, but, uh, but we can look into anything.
Sure. Good, good enough. Uh, so I look forward to, uh, working on this and hopefully, um. President Warren's given me a tight timeline and he says, let's get this going by, uh, January of 22. So hopefully we'll, we'll have a good report, uh, to provide to you, President Warren. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for noting that. Thank you. Uh, let's see, I'm not finished yet. So let's move on. Um, just.
Hang on, Roger, Roger, is this Jermaine to?
Yes, just back up on the slot. Just a quick question on the caps. Is there any data on false alarms and what happens when? Alarms are triggered? Does that, does it, does a cap that, that. Exits a sound requires someone to go digging up pipes? What's, what comes after that?
Um, oh, that's a, that's a good question. I assume I, unless, uh, our general manager is on, I can answer it.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so I would, the, the, it's a web service. It's a microphone, a cellular phone. And a, and a web service all integrated together. So the, the cap transmits. It's, it's, uh, acoustic data to the web service and they evaluate it and they, uh. You know, they're listening for patterns and they actually will listen for two or three, um, hydrants. Uh, so you, you lay these out with a known geolocation at every hydrant. So that you know how far apart they are and they actually will, will, you know, you know, basically call back or email back with a suspect. And a location, they'll say, and we think it's, you know, 100 feet between hydrant A and B. And, you know, they, they might look at it for a day or two days or something like that. Then, then, uh, the next step is for the water district to go out and look at it. Now, and the water district has additional, um. Leak sensing equipment that can be used if there's nothing obvious. So it's, you know, you wouldn't, I, I agree with you, Roger, you wouldn't want to. Start digging just because they said, but the examples that they gave it in San Jose water were. You know, the, the water company said, there's no way there's a leak and it turned out to be under, um, Santa Moss Expressway. And it was really there. So, so there, but they do build a few days worth of data. If necessary, and they're correlating between multiple hydrants. And then, uh, we have an additional set of equipment that we can actually place on valves. You, you know, the valves that are in the road normally, we can, if, if we're not convinced that we should dig, then there's a couple other steps we can take to, um. To confirm that there is in fact a leak worth digging for.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd just like to support exactly what, uh, Director Jordan just said, that, that he, he just mentioned at the end of his statement and they. They correlate. So like he said, they communicate with each other and it'll tell you whereabouts on the, on the water main in between the fire hydrants. And give you a, uh, give you a starting point. So. And then, and then we can, uh, take other testing equipment, even sounding equipment. And, uh, go and listen for it as well as we have our own other correlators, as he mentioned, that we can put on the water valves.
Great. Thank you very much.
Oh, and in fact, what, what he meant by the sounding equipment, you actually put a, a, your ear to a valve. Yeah. And you can, you know, through a pipe and you can, you can hear if there's water. Right. And it's, it's very noisy. So that's why this is so, it's so good to have something highly automated. Uh, compared to the old days.
Okay. Very good. All right. Looking forward to bringing this back, um, to the, uh, the commission in December, excuse me, January.
Good. Okay. And then moving on, just very quickly, wanted to mention the IT services, the RFP here is still underway for us to have services. Um, a lot of this is going to be tied into now our records procurement and records management retrieval, storage processes. And then Zone Haven, just wanted to mention that the campaign's underway and in coordination with the fire department. Outreach and education efforts on Zone Haven, the district will be putting together a packet to send to each of the households with those various items in it. A magnet sticker for residents to personalize their Zone Haven zone, uh, informational flyers, a resiliency calendar for 2022. And a before and after disaster resource flyer. So it's again, an opportunity for us to touch base with the residents. And, uh, let them know, again, mindful of the beginning of the year as to, uh, what we're doing in preparation for, for their safety. I also wanted to mention, just prior to ending this presentation, I wanted to thank Commissioner Tyson for also being a part of the, um. Outreach at the wildfire, wildfire preparedness, uh, event. And thank you, Mr. Tyson, for coming and chatting with our volunteers there. So that concludes my general manager report. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Any additional questions from the commissioners? Any additional comments from the public? All right. Thank you. We'll now move to item nine, the financial consultant report and district clerk report. Corey, get both hats out. There we go. Item nine A is an update from the standing budget subcommittee pertaining to a special meeting to develop the draft fiscal year 2022, 23. Budget, General Manager Logan and Financial Consultant Vargas, please introduce the item.
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you for the commissioners that, that convened the standing. Commission budget subcommittee, and I think we made good progress. We're here to report that. And with that, I'll turn it over to, um, uh, Corey Vargas, who's our financial consultant to start off the first six slides. Corey, it's all yours.
Okay, let me get my little share screen going. And hopefully no technical difficulties. And can everyone see the screen? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So um we present to you tonight uh the beginnings of uh the uh the fiscal year twenty-three uh draft uh financial uh budget. And um as Jay had stated, uh the uh Standing Budget Subcommittee met uh on November ninth, twenty-twenty-one, uh started development on that budget. And um so we had some uh little revisions. Um and we will go over them tonight. Roger will be uh presenting um the expenditures for you. I'm going to start you off just sort of with the background. Um obviously, um our mission of the district is to protect the lives, property, environment within the community it serves from fires, disasters and medical emergencies or other incidents through education prevention, emergency response services for the town of Los Angeles Hills and adjacent adjacent county areas. And um our district has the three pillars that you're familiar with, the CWPP Annex Four, our Successor Strategic Plan, and then this is the budget. Um another item is the uh the chart of services, uh which is built upon those three pillars and sort of provides a a roadmap and guide to the programs, operations, um and management to achieve our mission. And um I sent out to you today the uh revised version of that. Um it was emailed and posted to the public today and Jay will uh review that after Roger's discussion and in a little bit in a little more detail. I'm gonna just move on. Um budget overview, so um this was developed by uh Jay and myself and uh vetted and revised at the November ninth uh Standing Budget Subcommittee Meeting. Um and again, we have an accumulation of a strong fund balance. We've had a positive net change in fund balance over the past five years, expected to do the same in this current fiscal year. Uh as you know, we're continuing to uh expand our integrated hazardous fuel reduction projects and programs. Uh we're collaborating with uh local regional agencies. Um and we're strengthening the uh hazardous fuel reduction and community resiliency. We're also uh increasing personnel and consulting resources. So uh that's to help us achieve our mission. Go to the next up, sorry. So we're here for you is the balance sheet and I just want to point out uh for the record. So usually I do, um I'll show you the actual amounts for uh the the three years prior. I would do a reprojection of the current fiscal year. Um this is by no means final. Um and I was mentioned under the consent calendar how um spending seemed kind of low so far this year. Most of the data I have, I only have through September. Um bills usually come a month after uh the work is done. So even though you have the October report for you, really, the the expenditures you have are only through September. Um also, some of the bigger projects like the El Monte Moody Road um project that haven't been built for that yet. So um I will take a look at, you know, hopefully by the time I bring this revised budget back to you at the January meeting, I will have some more definite numbers. I can get you a more uh definite reprojected uh fiscal year twenty-two. And I think just some of the little highlights on this are uh as far as our capital assets, um we had originally budgeted, um I think we we had had a question about how our um hydrants and infrastructure were being uh recorded as capital assets and it was discovered after discussion with the auditors that uh because those expenditures were recognize, they they were recognized as expenditures in the year of purchase way back when we were doing the all the upgrades in twenty uh yeah, two thousand ten, two thousand eight. Um there was no need to capitalize them. So I've reprojected much lower um number there for capital assets, but it has increased from fiscal year twenty-one due to the purchase of the masticator that everybody's really excited about. So we're looking to get that done in uh fiscal year twenty-two. Um and a grass mower and a trailer. Um fiscal year twenty-three also budget a little higher in the assets. Um that's to open up to the possibility of possibly another masticator should the this first one be uh successful on or district vehicles uh to be determined, but I just wanted to have that in the budget. And really, uh everything else I think is kind of self-explanatory because cash changes um based on your expenditures. So revenues, now I don't really have anything uh finite here because I received this, uh I received the reprojected fiscal year twenty-two and the uh draft twenty-three uh property tax revenues from the county of Santa Clara Office of Budget Analysis. They don't give that to me until the beginning of December. So by the January meeting, um we'll have their numbers there. Um so these here that I have is is again, just rough estimates. Um I don't know the accuracy. I I won't stand behind the accuracy of these numbers yet. So um but by January, we will have those numbers. Um and as far as the interest deposits and investments, um I'm I'm also waiting for uh the county commingled funds interest report, um the latest one I haven't received yet. So again, it's very rough numbers there, but um probably will be higher, but yeah, to be determined. Uh, excuse me. And then we are going to go on to um talking about the expenditures and I'm going to pass that over to Roger then.
Okay, yeah, the reason why I'll take over here is uh as an extension of the Standing Budget Subcommittee that represents both uh Commissioners Tyson, Sherlock and myself met with Corey, I guess, last week to go over the preliminary version of this and sort of have an early view to so could bring a slightly more revised version here to the overall commission. The reason this page is important is that, you know, this really represents um the picture of what we as a com- as a commission expect our organization to be. Uh it's it's what we're doing, it's how we're structured and where we think we're going. Um so it's really important to to look at this um and look at each number, understand what does it mean uh and where do you want it to be? Remember, this reflects where we will be in a year and a half. Um and I know it's really hard to sort of predict given how we're to, we've been growing in many ways. Um you know, we're moving in a lot of different directions. It's hard to say where we would be in eighteen months. But we do need to sort of lock things down with the county. So it's, it makes it tough for us as organizations to look out ahead and lock it in. Uh but that's where we are. Now, on this page, um you'll see there's not a whole lot of difference. So really, um this is mostly administrative things. Really, the next page, uh and you see, this is only two point seven eight percent of the total expenditures. Uh this is mostly administrative things. This is where things get, you know, more more real. Um, the key thing here, this really represents what does our staff look like? And this is a question to ask yourself. What do we want our staff to look like for the next year and a half? You know, if you look back, we we've, you know, the major change in what this organization has become and what it has done for providing service back to our our taxpaying residents is in having a staff that can really make the programs happen. Um what this reflects really is, I think, a a single significant change, which is to add uh um one more position, you'll see there's just a program man- programs manager uh full-time. Uh what that really is, is to reflect that our staff is currently has their hands full with all these programs going on right now. We are, that's where the bottleneck for us right now uh to doing more activities is people. I guess in a way, it's what you want it to be. Uh but it reflects that, you know, that's whatever you think our organization should be, that's the knob you've got to change if you want us to expand or contract is our people. This represents the fact that um so much of the programs we're doing it are at such a high level now that they're involving a lot of administrative uh and organizational collaboration, really falling at the Jay Logan level um to talk to other organizations, to talk to the county, really make authorizations occur um and really oversee all the administrative program management at the top level while you've got strategic things happening with David, Denise. Um, you know, really, as you see them coordinating the programs out there on the street, you know, literally, as I saw them this week along El Monte Moody. Um so that's what that position is meant to be, is to really reflect that the significant ability for us to manage these large programs. And you're going to hear that we're going to, we hope to continue expanding these programs is in the air of programs management. That's what that position reflects. There's also uh a uh temporary and seasonal employees line. Um that is to reflect that we've got the feedback I've been seeing is that a lot of the these these programs happen seasonally and we really could use additional help but not require a full-time employee to be there for those times in a way for some peak load handling, having some spare uh abilities to bring on some temporary help when needed. So that's the other slot there. Um those are the key elements of this page. And so I'd really like to open offer for discussion how people feel about this, because I think this is a hidden behind the numbers is the question of where do you think this organization should be going? Um I want people to feel comfortable about is this too big, too small, just right? Because that really tells our staff and certainly from a budgeting point of view, but also from a strategic point of view, where do you want us to be going? Uh I don't want to speak for Georgia Joan. In fact, I encourage Georgia Joan to speak up if I've said anything that didn't match what we were saying the other day. Um trying to reflect that. Um but I think it's important for us to feel on the same page here. Literally, literally and metaphorically.
No, I think you, I think you said it well, Roger. I think the decision is, you know, if we're going to continue to grow and pro- provide more programs, how do we enable the staff to do that? Otherwise, we can't, we can't grow. So it's really around that.
Yeah, I would just echo that. And Roger, I appreciate you taking the lead in describing this to everybody else. We had a really constructive discussion about these sorts of issues, about the nature of the resources, how we can deploy them. And and frankly, we all want to do more and we have the resources and we need the staff to do that. So we just have to do things in that kind of order to make those, all these good things happen.
Yeah, one thing I'll add is that we're, it's a interesting organization that we know we have funds to spend and you'd think that we could be more uh responsive if we needed more to hire more, but that's just not the way it works in staying really well aligned with the county and our supervi- our supervisors. So this requires uh a lot of very strict forecasting. So it's important to look at it at this time, but um any other comments before we move to the next slide? I I really don't want to rush this at all. I think this is important.
No, I think it's, I think it's extremely important because as you, this is how the organization will get things done over, you know, a year and a half from now. And my understanding is exactly what the the Subcommittee articulated that our our ability to execute and you know, deliver programs uh to the public is really is gated by staff hours. And my understanding is, is that, for example, the fire br- uh shade fire break on uh Moody Road. Uh the complexity of that, well, we've learned the number of staff hours required to be involved in that was incredible learning experience. And what we've learned is is that it takes a lot of people to make something like that happen. And so for us to deliver high-quality services to the district, I think we have to have the staff to do it. So I'm very supportive of what you have here. Commissioner Terry, any other comments before we move on?
Certainly, Roger. Yeah, I certainly agree with what's being said, you know, uh in order to achieve what we need to, we've got to put in the infrastructure and uh, you know, uh you know, commit to all of these improvements, you know, we need to do all of this. So I I support it.
Great, okay. Well, in that case, um we'll move to the next slide. Um let's see. On, I think there's, I have nothing really to offer on this. This is um essentially, you'll see that uh oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Wait, I got, there is a key thing here. Um important here, the key change is in those under professional right there, outside professional services, very large jump here. I want to explain, a lot of things are being lumped here in here and I wish they could be broken out, so I'm going to break them out for you. This is where, in a way, some of our programs fall. This includes items like um our uh G, our CWP, CWPP Fire Fuel Modeling, that will be an outside professional services. Uh GIS Project Consulting, um that we do now. Uh this includes our IT services that we're trying to hire for, and we've been working to get an RFP up and get a group together to do that for us so that I'm not our IT manager. Um our website maintenance, our records retention services. Um uh strategic planning consulting, because remember this period, uh twenty-two, twenty-three is going to cross over the end of our strategic plan. We're going to need to have another strategic plan during this period. So also funds in there for new strategic plan effort. Um so all of these services are lumped under here. Um, yeah, again, I wish not broken out specifically, but that's what that large number, that's the key thing on this page that's increased, represents. So a lot of the the efforts we'll be doing where we have other professionals helping us is in that line.
Yo, can I ju- I can jump in real quick. Um we are able to, um so as I have the uh the audit um accounting and legal services on their own little line items, um we can make other line items for specifically if you want to be tracking spending specifically on GIS, uh specifically on strategic plans, specifically on CWPP Fire Fuel Modeling. I can do that if if that's something the commission wishes to see.
I did, I meant to say it really as a as a descriptive aspect for commissioners. Um, you know, I I like the fungibility of what we have here. We'll obviously be approving everything that comes up. So everything comes to us specifically. Um but uh if I don't want to make more work for us trying to pre-predict each one uh in there. I know that we've, we've used uh sort of a uh an early estimate to come up with that number and we could use that, but I just want it, when people understand what's underneath that line is quite a few different things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Let's see, any other comments on this page? Because um or it or if people think of any other professional services they think we're missing and need, this would be the place for that, for external experts uh to be brought in. Seeing nothing. Uh and we can always talk about this later, we can continue on. Um comments on this page are, I believe that the um we're still waiting for the, tell me if this is wrong, Corey. We're still waiting for the final service cost for the contract for next year. So this is an estimate.
Um, yeah, that's correct. I'll get that in January.
Right. And uh some of the changes you might notice that we asked about was that um and this kind of reflects a question that Mr. Epstein had earlier, which is, you know, the extra fire season staff is down. And the reason of that is that it's it's somewhat offset by the station eight staffing that's in here. So that's the the reasoning behind that. Um, so we certainly are expecting to proceed with that plan and uh um obviously there are complications and and a lot and working with our collaborators, but we think it's a great, strong plan. Um, we want to continue it, but that would, with that station open, it reduces the need somewhat for the fire, extra fire season staff, hence the reduction there. I think that's the only, oh, the other thing to note here is just that um some of these purchases that are still here that we're, I guess, have been moved, like the water tender. Um, I've forgotten where that is actually moved to. That's an example, by the way, of by the way, another expense that we're trying to spend and not able to spend it yet. Um, you know, we budgeted for it, we're trying to spend it, it's a significant purchase and um, you know, we want to get it in this year's budgeting. Is it going to be ready between supply chains and between the availability of these things? We're just not able to buy it at this point. So am I correct, Corey? It's saying it it may slip into the next year because we can't get it this year.
Yeah, I think that that might be a fair statement. I see uh Chief Glass has his hand raised. He might be able to provide more detail.
Yeah, I just, um again, and I'm not going to weigh in on county procurement uh procedures on maybe County Council, uh Chalden would, but uh we're planning to expend those funds uh in December.
Oh, good.
And uh we have a team traveling to Pennsylvania to begin the spec process and the unit will be built in Louisiana and we'll take delivery in the uh twenty twenty-two timeframe. I'm not sure we'll make the July one cutoff, so we might have to do a roll forward of that money. Uh but we can, we'll be working very closely with the general manager uh to solidify the contract for the purchase of that and uh get that expedited. Again, we were delayed due to COVID and some of the backlog of stuff going on, as you've mentioned, it was supply chain challenges. But uh we are moving forward with the water tender and like I said, I have a team traveling to Pennsylvania in um December. I believe it's the week of the tenth to uh begin the process for the water tender.
That's great news. Thank you very much. Okay, uh next slide. So any comments? Um, key things to point out here is that uh a lot of the projects have now been put under a single banner of integrated hazardous fuel reduction, all those things there. And this gives you a sense of how many big projects are going and how much stuff falls under that. I wish I'd realized that when I offered to chair the Subcommittee on Hazardous Fire Reduction, because so much stuff falls under there. Um, I think it's really for you to look and see the the estimated costs here of things. Um I don't think there's anything, uh oh, you see that the uh let's see the line here, the attempt to, we want to increase, you know, small thing, we want to increase the goat grazing program and try Let's see the line here, attempt to, we want to increase, you know, small thing, we want to increase the go casing program and try and use it some other places, there's a small increase there. The open, in terms of the open space fuel break program, it's, that's obviously a hard one to, to budget for, because it's so much collaborative with. Mid Penn and others, so it's a harder to estimate, we really want to be spending money there. Um, we'll have to see how that goes, I'm, uh, open the other comments there, that's the reason for the, the budgeting difference there. We, we want to expand the home ignition zone programs if we can, and I think that, um. I think our, our limitation is as much, uh, uh. What we can get, what labor that firesafe can bring to that program as well, I, I don't want to misspeak there, please tell me if I'm wrong. But we want to be doing more programs there, so I think those speak for themselves in terms of how I want to be expanding these programs and what, what's all go, is going on there. I think everything else is pretty similar to what it's been previously, nothing new there. Here's some notes for that, which, um. You can, can read here, uh, says the similar things. Uh, oh, if you, uh, actually, if we can go back one more, go back to that, the two eighty fuel break project, you go back to that. Uh, go back one more slides with the numbers, if we could. It's a key one there, I know, I'm sorry, that's the one I'm meant to talk about, you'll see a big project there. I two eighty fuel break project, and I think we'll probably discuss this in a few minutes later when we talk about, you know, later report. This is a key one, and I don't want to be, uh, stealing, uh, Dave's thunder for talking about the progress that we, we really are hoping to have there. With some major work along, uh, two eighty, uh, and working with Caltrans and so forth, that's a big, major project coming along and. Progress is happening there, that's a big number there that I wanted to explain.
Yeah, thanks, if I could just interject, you might also want to mention the, um, the line item, uh, fifth. Uh, five twenty eight, twenty two oh nine vegetation and response equipment, that's another big one coming up in the twenty two, twenty three.
And yes, exactly, oh, thank you, uh, and I believe, see, and that's as the notes said, now, is that in the, the next page notes, I believe. That would be the masticator and a mower that goes with it and a trailer already purchased in the twenty two year. You can see the notes there.
Oh, it's, it would be for like the maintenance and repairs, um, and upkeep. Um, and then any other, uh, sort of smaller equipment, um, that would need to be purchased during fiscal year twenty three. For, um, our, um, for Dave.
And again, I think we'll be discussing more about that in detail as we talk about the hazardous fuel reduction programs and progress and so forth.
And we might be getting into that later, um, during Dave's presentation, but I'm curious, have we ever? Have we calendared this anywhere when we look at the different projects that we think will hit when? Or is it pretty much just what you have, what we've done in spreadsheets?
Oh, as far as, um, you know, when the, it, it's hard to calendar this far in advance and Dave might be able to provide better. Idea, but I know like for last year's budget, um, I calendared the, uh, the Moody, uh, road. To be happening a couple of months sooner, which, um, so then when I said, okay, I expect that we're gonna spend this much in, uh, you know. September and October and, no, we didn't, because it didn't start until November, so, um, that also kind of. Throws us off, so we tried as best as we can, um, and, and having Dave on board is definitely gonna help. Someone dedicated to those projects and programs, and, um, with that, that experience he can provide me with. A much better idea of, of when we can expect them to happen.
That actually brings up something which I was gonna talk about at the end, which is. Because we have some expenditures that are in generally large, cover a, a long period of time, are hard to pin down, in some ways. It might behoove us, and this is more of a strategic item, to consider a two-year budget planning cycle for ourselves. Obviously, for the county, we need to do one-year things, we might want to be looking at calendaring things in terms of what is a two-year overall plan. And trying to fit that in, because I think, Joan, your point is well taken, that we, it's, it's very hard to slot these things down into the twelve-month period and really have them. Realistic, or things don't slide over in the next, in the next budgeting cycle, so a two-year plan might make sense for us from. Budgeting and forecasting in terms of how we. Okay, next slide. So the key to this, and, um. Is we want, you know, all think about our. Are our expenditures properly balanced? For what we ask from our taxpaying residents, are we spending them in a balanced way? What this shows is that, you know, a majority, sixty percent, does go directly to suppression and E M S services. And then it says that forty percent goes to programs around fire prevention and resiliency, making that happen. Things that wouldn't come just from. You know, in direct suppression programs alone. And I think to me, that represents that that's the forty percent of, it's the difference of us keeping local control. Of our taxpayer dollars, is us being able to determine what that forty percent is going for, now, maybe over time, we want to change that ratio, and I know we're trying to. Increase our spending in programs, this is where we've achieved, is what I, what I feel. But this shows that, you know, twenty-three percent are actually going to the programs themselves, while, uh, sixteen percent. Is going to our ability to administer them and bring them to our residents. Um, so I think, I think this, this is, a lot of times people tend to zone out over pie charts, but I think this is a good one to really look at and understand. This is again, is in the way we look at what we are as, as an organization, um, we are not just, uh, a contract. For, for fire service, we are providing huge and increasing amount of services to our residents. With very large programs, and, uh, I hope to see that part of the pie increasing. Uh, but also give you a sense of what the administration of that costs and the programs themselves cost. Any questions on that?
Great pie chart.
Great, thank you. I've had not discussed this at all with Corey, and I'm gonna say that what I see, when I see this chart. Is that we are, you know, really trying to get our expenditures up, you know, as we go forward, and over the years, you can see that. You know, it's, it's the red line that's moving up, that's where we want to be. Um, we want to be having good reasons and ways to spend our taxpayer dollars. Um, and I think this, this explosion of programs that we're providing, um, is really bringing that up, so I think that's the right trend where we want to be. But, uh, I'm open to anyone's comments on that.
Great, any, any questions for the subcommittee? From the staff, or from other commissioners? Any questions from the public?
I'm gonna make one more comment.
Go ahead, Roger.
And really, I'm gonna steal some of the words from Commissioner Tyson, who are, really put it well, where, you know, my first reaction when I saw the whole budget was. How can we spend more? And it's strange to, to be in that mode. But I think a better way to put it was using George's words, which is, with the assets we have, how can we make even larger investments in this community? And, you know, we are limited by our people at this point, um, we have assets we want to bring to bear. And we are learning as we go, and these, these past three years have been incredible ramp up. Um, but we do have assets to bring to bear if we know ways to invest them, and so I'm encouraging all the commissioners here to be considering. What other major investments can we make, uh, and how do we bring those to bear? Um, it's not just about bringing these, you know, making these programs more and more, what else can we do, and we want to be, continue asking for ideas. Of how to do that. That's it.
Great, thank you, Roger, um, Alan, you have a question or comment?
Yes, thank you very much, um. I guess I was, nor, normally doesn't the, uh, commission discuss the matter first and then the public, uh. Has an opportunity to participate, I, I don't know what the, what the process is.
Um, regarding the budget process?
Regarding how the commission intends to, um, move forward with this budget, is, is this going to, or is the commission going to discuss this? Or is this just going to adopt the, uh, recommendation of the budget subcommittee, um?
I believe, let's, first, let, let's step back, say, tonight, we, we're not voting to approve a budget tonight. This is a chance for everyone to discuss it and to say where this is the right direction, this is the wrong direction, we're missing something totally. Um, something's way out of line, this is a chance to say that, so that when more accurate numbers come in and rework can be done. Um, before, you know, an, another, you know, potentially another meeting just on the budget. Or, or approval in what January, uh, January time.
Yeah, because, because the, the, the timeline, Corey, correct me if I'm wrong, we, January, we have a draft, we submit it to the county in February. Is when the draft.
It's actually, yeah, it's the, the last slide on, on my little presentation, yeah, so, um, the, uh. The draft is, is approved January eighteenth, um, any changes to revenues or expenditures made after. January eighteenth will be approved at the February fifteenth, the twenty-two regular meeting, and then submitted to O B if needed. Um, O B, their, um, submittal de, due date is February eleventh, which is before our February fifteenth, uh, meeting. That's why we have to approve it or finalize it on the eighteenth, then they have so kindly allowed us that if there are any. Little changes, uh, we can make them, uh. After the fifteenth, but before the county executive, uh, meets on the twenty-second to the twenty-fifth.
So I consider tonight to really be about idea generation, uh, and criticism, uh, so I'm, I'm interested in Alan's and any member of the public's thoughts. Um, so that all of us commissioners can then consider, and we have time, not, we don't have to, to decide them tonight, it's. For our future budget approval meetings, whether these are comments are, uh, makes sense for us or not, so, thank you.
Commissioner Spreen, I have one other slide I just wanted to introduce for this conversation, and, um. Uh, Victoria, do you want to put it up, the service chart? Or do you want me to do it? Okay. So I just, I just, uh, you know, as we're looking at different glimpses of the expenditures and the revenues. And the pie charts that I thought were very helpful, I also wanted to just to put, point this out to you again, this is your service, this is your chart of services. And you'll see over on the right side, we have services to residents and to the community. And then if you go across the left, you'll see programs of, uh, prevention and protection. And really, on one page, these are the programs that are represented in the budget that you talked about. Over on the, the far left is the suppression services and then the various programs and services we have. At the bottom of this, um, chart, if you can see it, I don't know if it will, there you go, thank you, Victoria. Is the platform or the functions that staff has to provide to be able to support. All of these various residential community and prevention and protection resiliency programs. And you see the various functional boxes there, so this may help you also just visualize what the programs are. What the services are to the community, if you have this on a desktop or your laptop or your phone. Most of these boxes are hyperlinked and it will take you to a page on the website. Or a page at, at Central Fire or some authority page that describes what these programs are, so. It's a very dynamic, uh, kind of a pictograph, uh, demonstration of what our programs and projects are, so. This may be helpful to you too, as you consider where the district's going, what, what the percentages of expenditures are, are to be. And what the path would be, so thank you for letting me just share that slide.
Thank you, General Manager Logan.
Sure.
So Alan, back to your comment, do you have any feedback at this time?
Uh, yeah, yes, thank, thank you very much for the opportunity. Uh, first, uh, with regards to property taxes, I, I think they're too low and, and I know you'll get better numbers from the. County soon, interest earnings, I think, is probably too high, um, interest rates are next to nothing and. So I think even though the balance is immense, the interest earnings are probably too high. Uh, I'm troubled by the addition of this program manager, because when I listened to the budget meeting. It was described originally as an administration manager, and it sounds to me like everything the program manager is going to be doing is what the operations manager was. Hired, um, to do, and salaries have gone from under a hundred thousand dollars four years ago. To over a million dollars, and it just seems like a very high amount, and the challenges I, I observed is. The task of getting the projects done, and, um, to give you an example, um, the integrated hazard inspections. The district would be far better off hiring a, uh, high school graduate who goes through the training program to do those inspections. Than to be dependent upon someone else, uh, to do it. I didn't hear you talk about the plans for the lot, which was, uh, part of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expenditures. Um, I've expressed my opinion about the Palo Alto, I don't think it's a good, a good use of funds. Uh, I, first of all, I think it's a real staffing challenge, because you're, you're hiring people basically on overtime and. Anyways, I think it's better to just land it on high fire danger days or whatever other days that the. Chief thinks would be appropriate to, to man that station. There's a hazard mitigation grant program that's being done by O E S, um, I think you should, uh, try to get money for. For doing that, for doing the, uh, work along, um, Highway two eighty. Um, if you look at historically, this is not a plan, this is more of putting buckets of money in place. Last year, you, you know, last budget, you budgeted five million dollars in project expenditures and only spent seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. It looks like you're on track to be, you know, something in the same, same range there. I don't know what you're, who's gonna run this equipment that you're going to buy or where you're gonna store it. I have more comments that I could make, but the clock is running down, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan.
If I may comment, I'm glad you, Alan, mentioned this, because it's actually one that I, I forgot one of my most favorite things. In that, uh, professional service, uh, outside professional services bucket, the list of items, uh, one of the things. Included is a review of using our parcel to its best use. Looking at what the strategic plan items, the one I'm covering for sustainability of our organization. Question, we've had a number of questions arise about where, where we're going, where are we gonna be able to put a staff? You know, where is a place for staff administrative duties, right now, everyone's virtual in the home, but that really is not, uh, always wise. And there have been other needs for that parcel have come up to play, and, you know, if we don't be, if we're not looking at that seriously over the next year and a half. It'll never get done, so part, one of the projects is to have someone come in and really architecturally. Talk about, you know, find out what are the full set of needs, what can fit on there, what would be possibilities of that, so that's one of the other studies, it's part of that bucket of, uh. Of, of, of professional services, and I just want to include that, because, uh, I think it's a, it's a favorite of mine, for sure.
You're good, thank you, Roger. Any additional public comment on the, the draft budget proposal? Initial draft. All right, Roger, do you think we've covered this enough?
Hearing no other comments.
Yeah, I do want to, I do want to thank you all, this is the first time I can recall that in November, we've had a budget. Plan that's in this state. Usually we get this after the new year, so I want to thank you guys for, for jumping on this and driving this at this point. Because, you know, this now lays out a framework in which that, you know, have additional developed it further, but, you know, it's now in November as opposed to. Running around in an emergency situation in, in January, in February, so thank you. All right, um. Thank you, G M Logan, Financial Consultant Vargas and Commissioner Spreen, if there's any further questions from the commissioners? Any further questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll now move to item nine B, which is attendance at the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one regular commission meeting. Or a date for a special meeting, District Clerk Vargas, please introduce the item.
Okay, yes, so, um, I guess as most of you know, the ones that were here last year, when we set up our, uh, twenty twenty-one regular meeting schedule. We have the December meeting scheduled for December twenty-first, and so this is just. I am going to, uh, I guess ask the commission to, uh, discuss and decide whether, uh, they feel they need. The December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting, um, or if they feel they need a, uh, special meeting. Maybe sometime held, or held sometime earlier in December, um, and I think we had a really good, uh, budget discussion tonight. And I think we had a really good budget discussion tonight, and I'm I'm glad. I think, like you said, usually we don't get it done in November, and I'm glad it was moved kind of farther up on the agenda so that we had sort of. Fresh eyes on it from all the commissions, so. Yeah. From my point, I don't, I know I've been saying, well, I'd love to have a December meeting just to talk about the budget, but I think we had a good discussion tonight, so. I'm not seeing that it's necessary, but I will let the commission, of course, make that decision.
Great, thanks, Corey, so I think that there's two items here. One is that we have traditionally gone ahead and canceled the regular meeting at the end of the year, the December meeting, so that's one item. Which, you know, it's currently calendared for December twenty-first. The other is, do we need an addition, does any, does the commission feel that we need any additional meet, an additional meeting in December to. Continue deep diving on the budget item, and so what I'm going to propose. Is is that we, we cancel the December twenty-first meeting. And that I I'm, my sense is we don't need a special meeting on the budget, but I'll. I'm open to hear what the rest of the commissioners have to say, Terry, you're very patient, you have your hand up.
Hi, yeah, thanks, I would want to hear from staff as to whether or not they think we should be having a December meeting for guidance or to receive any additional reports that they have.
Thank you, Jerry, any feedback from the staff?
By the way, I'm I'm hearing it, is the input from the commission seems to support what this draft budget looks like. Or the outline of the budget, the percentage, the balance, the priorities. If that's not in place, if there's any line items that need to be looked at, would like to have that information so we can prepare it for. For January. Corey, what's what's your comments on, do you think you're ready to move something into January, or do you need more discussion in December?
No, I think that because that it will be discussed again in January, so I think that it would be fair. From what I've heard, they, you know, there was no, you know, oh, hey, what? Should we have this new expense account for this, or do, you know, we need more research on this or that, I I think that, as you said. Consensus seemed to be that that numbers. Percentages of expenditures were in order, so now it's just nailing down those, the more precise numbers, which I will do in January, so. Not seeing that there's any need for a December meeting on, from my standpoint.
Great, thanks, Corey. Any other meetings, Jay, or reports we would need in December besides budget? This requiring a meeting?
I don't think so, I think weed abatement's always top of our mind, but I think we've got those that calendared out pretty well.
All right. Any other put input from the commissioners on the proposal? Okay, so the consensus of the commission, or so, here's what, here's what I'm proposing is is that we cancel the December twenty-first meeting. And that we do not hold a special meeting in December to discuss the budget. That's what I'm proposing we do. And so I believe this is a consensus item. Chris, County Council, do we need to vote on it, or is this a consensus item?
It can be a consensus item.
Great, thank you. So unless any other commission members have any, Roger's got a thumbs up, so that's a yes. You, Joan, Roger, or George, okay, Kavita, all right, so we're moving forward, no December meeting, and we're not going to have a special meeting for the budget in December. That is the consensus of the commission, thank you, everyone. All right. We will now move to item. Nine C, which is the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners. Commissioners, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting schedule, District Clerk Vargas, please introduce the item.
Thank you, and I mean, your packet is the schedule for the twenty-twenty-two meetings. Being the third Tuesday of every month. And just looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
They moved, Tonka?
Oh, well. That's, that's what I'm recommending, I guess, but yeah, but.
We're looking for a motion, thank you, Corey, you started to, you know, thank you, District Clerk Vargas. Any clarifying questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, now entertain a motion, Kavita, I think now I can take the motion.
They moved.
Thank you, Kavita, who have a second?
Sherlock will second it.
Thank you, Joan. All right, the item is now open for discussion, any comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none, any comments or questions from the public? All right, this hearing none, we'll now move to a vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Approved.
Commissioner Kearney?
Approved.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Approved.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you, we'll now move to item ten, the Emergency Services Manager Report. Item ten A and ten B are the reports, ESM Captain Gluhan and Cert General Analyst BB, please provide the reports. And include item five B, the update on the Saddle Mountain Firewise Community Recognition.
Absolutely, thank you, President Warren, Commissioners and staff and public for this opportunity. As you can see, we have a lot of collaborations going on on this first page. Let's go ahead and go to the next item, please, the next slide. So again, this looks typical of. Of all the other reports, the activities are robust in that box. General Manager Logan already mentioned the Zone Haven webinars, but we have several more, one left in this year and three more in the next year. If you'd like to get onto the Eventbrite page for Santa Clara County Fire Department, you can join that, we also have recording available. Through our website coming up soon if it's not already loaded in there, so. One of those presentations is recorded and connected into our website, I believe County Fire has those recorded too and available. We're going to talk about the preparedness fair, so I'm going to skip down, but I wanted to just really shout out. The boldness of that in giving major kudos. To our our great analyst, Victoria Bebe, she outdid herself, it's a huge undertaking. To put on a project like this, so I really want to give her. The recognition for stepping up, arranging that, pulling it off and and even being in clement weather. She she talked to the the rain gods and made that hold off until. Like the next day, so before that trough came in, so we really got lucky. So thank you again to that. We've already talked a lot about some of these that comes, the items that come out of these meetings, and we'll be talking a little bit more like the ad hoc. Committee meeting and and some other things. That we have, I'm going to talk about the Firewise community here at the end, but we have been working on video recordings. With staff and with residents. To really kind of highlight the Firewise and the benefits that that has as a community. I'll go ahead and, we have an upcoming meeting this Wednesday to meet with Hidden Villa. Members of staff, Dave, Victoria, we'll be going to that, that's part of our integrated fuel plant and the Moody Road hardening. So there's a lot of the fuel breaking components that Hidden Villa has a large parcel along that. So that's one of the private strategic parcels that we really want to get in and give education to the staff, give hardening to the buildings. And then vegetation management on multiple layers and levels there. So the big thing that I have going on, other than the poison oak on my face from this project, is. The evacuation route hardening on Moody and El Monte roads. I don't know how many commissioners have had a chance to drive by, but the. The difference is very apparent, we had masticator in today working on poison oak. This is an area that probably has not seen much maintenance other than side roadside, just a little bit of trimming, probably since the. Construction of Foothill College, we have poison oak in there with a trunk circumference of at least. Four to six inches and tall as the oak trees climbing right up them. Traffic control has been, comments have been pretty good, we did have a little bit of a glitch today in that. AT&T was doing some pretty major work on some trees and in the area, so there was actually a double control going on, so it was a little heavier. Traffic weights than than have been. These pictures depict the road closure component, the traffic plan is is a very integral part, this is a very dangerous stretch of road to work on for the crews. So really important that we keep them safe for everybody that's on their staff, Fire Safe Council. And the the crews from our tree vendor. And a big shout out to Fire Safe Council, they've been amazing to work with on this, so I really wanted to. Again, give the kudos and and the relationship and the collaboration that we have on that. Again, some other collaborations that we want to make sure that we recognize. We have the town of Los Altos Hills has collaborated with us, County Roads and Reports alongside with County Fire. So we have a lot of people working on this project to make it all happen. The residents that gave us the ROEs, we've done some little bit of work on Moody Road and it's been really. Positively received by those residents, especially the ones that gave us the additional. Beyond the fifteen feet of easement to go into to deepen those. That evacuation hardening, again, the things that we're looking to do is. If there were a car fire to slow that fire spread, to let residents and and visitors evacuate in case of an emergency and evacuation. And also improve, those roads are narrow, improve the response in by the fire apparatus because they are large and we have. That movement going on in both directions, so all of that's being achieved by what we're doing here. Again, we remove the dead vegetation primarily first. And then we look at in each individual plant and and decide, you know, what branches are advantageous for this type of hardening. Down in the bottom pictures, you can see some of the. Items that we ran into that were are the, some more of the challenges beyond traffic, you can see on that first left picture is. I believe there's a rat's nest in there and a lot, that's all poison oak, poison oak is now dormant right now, it just looks like a vine, it's not the three leaves, leave it be. That's not what you can do now, it's just a vine. The center picture is a hanging rat habitat. Those are all marked by a biological study that was done prior to a starting work, and we have to give that a five-foot sphere all the way around. There's a common rat and then there's a protected species of rat, they make the same environment, so we have to count that they're all. The environmentally protected rats, we give them that space and we don't cut that vegetation, so if you see pink or blue flagging, that means that vegetation, including poison oak, will not be. Taken care of in this. This evacuation route hardening, and then one of the unintended consequences is how much traffic has accumulated, and traffic, how much trash has accumulated. Alongside the route, this is the corner around Foothill College just prior to getting to the. Fire station is actually for homeless, unabandoned for homeless encampments and trash, a lot of trash. So we're collaborating with the town and the college to work on a trash removal plan, didn't know the volume until we started removing the brush and that kind of exposed that problem. So I think that's it for me on this update, we are going to continue working this week. We hope to be done, we're masticating at the college yesterday and today, that's probably been. One of the hardest things, we only have one traffic permit, so we can only do one area at a time, so controlling traffic. And getting a masticator running and hand crews, we have a double hand crew, so we have ten people working, two trucks, two chippers. So we're trying to get it done expeditiously, but to time it. We had a little bit of, we wait on equipment, but I want to keep the crews efficient. So trying to keep those going has been also another one of the little bit of challenges that we're learning. Quite a bit of learning curve going on with this, so. If there's any questions, I'll ask that now, and then if not, I'll have, Victoria, go ahead and give us the rest of the update for the cert.
Let's, let's, let's cover Captain Gluhan's report. Joan, comment question?
Yeah, I want to say one thing, I mean, I've had, you know, that's where my house is, and so I travel that route a couple times a day for one reason or another, and I just wanted to say the crew has been terrific. That is like the hardest place for you to ever start with the challenges with traffic there and. No shoulder on the road, et cetera, and they've done a really, really good job, even with the traffic light challenge where they were today. And I just think they they did everything they could to make it as good for the residents that had to get through as possible. So thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. George?
You know, I I am eager to see what it looks like, and I'm going to be out there as soon as I can, just an amusing kind of story. Back, I guess it was over a month ago, I knocked on a bunch of doors, left door hangers, if somebody wasn't home, and today. Today, I actually got a phone call message from somebody saying, what is this all about? So I returned the phone call today and said, here's what we're doing, and look around you, and if you like it, next time we do this, sign up, you could be part of this too. So anyway, that was, that was just kind of funny.
I did have a resident run out and say, can I turn my ROE in still? No, we've had the RFP, which is the work, you know, the progress to to complete the work, in hindsight, it will collect those for the. Follow-up, because we will have maintenance, obviously, all these things will grow back. The majority of all of this will grow back, even what we've cut, unless it was dead, will grow back. You know, it's, it's very hardy, all of this stuff is very hardy. So we will probably see most of it returning, although, you know, it'll be slower. But it's all very hardy in there, resilient.
Very good.
I just want to add that Foothill College has never looked better, it's amazing, I can imagine how much work it is, but I hope they appreciate. How it, much, how wonderful it looks, so, and I I know how much work that's been, it's incredible, so. And I I drive by there multiple times each day, the traffic control has been great, and I'm just loving looking at Foothill College and seeing what a difference it makes to the entrance into the city, so, it's wonderful.
And we have to remember the key point was that was a very big prior to, you know, COVID, a very big pinch point at three o'clock in the afternoon on any given day. That backs up, so, you know, imagine now evacuation and, you know, all of that stuff. You know, that's, that's what the reason is, the fuel loading, that's what we're doing to remove that, to to increase. The, hopefully, the safety component, that was why we called it evacuation route hardening, so. I I've explained to the guys, they don't speak a lot of English, but I said, if a car caught fire. Imagine what we would want the tree to look like so it wouldn't catch on fire, so that's how I've been explaining it to them to help me trim. Along there, because literally I'm pointing to branches at a time on what to trim, Irene and I are, and then Dave's been out there to help too, so thank you for all that, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so there's no further questions for Captain Gluhan, then we'll move to Cert Analyst BB's report.
Thank you, President Warren, we're going to show you a video that we put together of the wildfire preparedness fair, rather than having you listen to me drone on and on about. All the things we did there, we made a video, but before I show it, I'd really like to thank several people for their participation helping the event. Supervisor Semidian, Mayor Tonka, Jay Logan, Commissioners, District Staff. I'd really like to say thank you again to Santa Clara County Fire for their participation and help with Zone Haven and having a booth. Christmas Hills was also there, I think they all left, oh, I see Steve Jordan. Was there as well, Fire Safe Council, PGME, Commissioner Lars Office, Cow Water, Red Cross. On the Los Altos Hills Cert and Team Cert teams were out in full effect, and it was awesome to see. We've got town volunteers that came to help as well, the town of Los Altos Hill staff was excellent, Chris Knopf was there, he was my IT person. So, you know, he was a big lifesaver for me. Also, really big thank you to Denise Bluen, she took over a lot of the presentations. For, you know, people who couldn't do it last minute, and she she really was so effective at her speaking. That, you know, I just, I just want to say thank you for that, Denise, it's hard to get three presentations at the last minute, so. You definitely rocked that, Jackson, Rickets also, he did this video for us, and I also had him running around with his head cut off all day long. He did all of the video presentations for all of our speakers, and he's working on putting those on our website. And he also is so nice, but every time I tell him I need a new video, he very nicely starts it, so. Very big thank you to that, and then, of course, Dave Hornet is always my heavy lifter, so thank you, Dave, for for running the booth while Denise was busy doing presentations, I hope you enjoyed meeting. All of the residents that came and some of the council members as well. So without further ado, here is our video to share with you of our great events.
Well, I wanted to take advantage of this opportunity, first of all, I thank everyone that's here, thank you for attending, for the attendees, and thank you to my volunteers that came and came on a Saturday to help make this just a great event.
What I have found from forty-two years of fighting wildfire, and as you know, I'm a Santa Clara Valley native. But I fought wildfires twenty-five years in the city of San Jose and seventeen years with Cal Fire. Is it's not a flame front that comes and. is it's not a flame front that comes and takes over a house like a tsunami. It's the ember cast. It's all the burning embers that land in places where there is flammable vegetation that can catch on fire.
The trick is, is you want to make your house as fire safe as possible and your neighbors as well. Because your house can only do so much, but if your neighbor's house goes up in flames, the chance of yours is going to be a lot higher too. So you want to make sure as many people around you are trying to be as fire safe as well. When you talk about home hardening, that's when you actually make structural changes to the home to make it less combustible or non-combustible as much as possible. Slate roofs, composite roofs, vents that have gel coating on them. So they had an ember go in, they gel up and stop the fire from going into the attic space. All kinds of different home hardening, stucco versus, you know, wood siding or a hardy board, a cement board versus wood siding.
Thank you all for being here and more importantly, thank you for what you do. I'm going to call the district the little engine that cooks. The other way I might put it is it certainly punches above its weight. You've got a small district, tight knit community. And yes, we've got the brush chipping, the debris removal, the vegetation reduction, the home ignition zone assessment, the organization of the Firewise Communities, a place like Saddle Mountain area, for example. We've got the evacuation route, Moody and El Monte is a good example, road hardening project, the fire break that's in the works, the workshops, the webinar. Without even thinking about it, I think you are building and maintaining the sense of community that is the hallmark of Los Altos Hills surrounding. So thank you very much. Keep doing what you're doing. Keep us safe and we will all be the better for it. Thank you.
Okay, that was our exciting video. I'll do my report first and then take questions afterward. I'm going to make this a little bit bigger. So you can see I've got some, some new icons up here and I'm really proud to be presenting those new icons. I'll talk about that in a minute. So obviously a lot of my time this past month has been towards the fair. But I was able to get, of course, some
Are you sharing, Victoria? Are you sharing yet? I'm not seeing it.
You're not sharing.
Sorry. How's that?
There we go.
Hey, okay. Sorry about that, guys. Here, I'll go back and share my beautiful icons again since you didn't see them. There we go. So I can very, very happily tell you that I have been getting a lot of interest in teen cert more than ever before. One of our teen certs that went through the academy in June is now starting a club at St. Francis. He was a go getter and wanted me to get everything done for him in a week. So I, I did that. We also have had a lot of traction Mountain B as well. So just really trying to figure out what's going to work for the participants in terms of when we would be giving the program at the schools. And it takes a little bit to get that figured out, but I'm really excited to have that in the new year. I'm also going to be helping out the ECC. They're in need of a secretary. And since I have to attend the meeting so I can, you know, be involved in what they're doing and help them, I am going to be becoming an associate and a secretary for them. I was also attending a cert, I'm sorry, emergency alert conference on emergency planning and alerts in San Francisco. And there I learned a lot about some free things through Verizon that we can use in an event. We don't have to be Verizon customers. They will come and give us phones, set up command centers, set up wifi stations. They'll also do that for just community events as well. So we've already been talking to them about coming out and assisting in some of our drills, which they're more than happy to do. So very proud of that. And now, now that we're done with the fair, now the next thing is the end of the year, we're doing a cert, meeting and recognition night on December 11th. You're all invited. You'll get an official email tomorrow. So we're going to be recognizing some more of the great participation and volunteers we've had over the past year. And then my next thing is the Parks and Rec Department of Los Altos Town, sorry, I meant Los Altos Hills has asked me to put some things in their activity guide and work with them on doing some events over the year with the community. So I'm really super excited about that as well. And then we also just relaunched another teen cert academy as well as an adult hybrid academy for the next couple of months. I think that's pretty much it for me. Hopefully I will be seeing some of you at the end of the year event because I'm really excited about that. That is it for me. Any questions?
Any questions from, from the commissioners? Any questions, comments from the public?
A quick, President Warren, I wanted to just give the quick Firewise five, I didn't want to miss the five BI that I was, was moved down from the location. So I just did the quick Firewise, Saddle Mountain Firewise. Yeah, let me just give a real quick. I don't have any slides prepared on that. Because I thought we were going to do a little something different. So going really well. We're hoping to, we've had, we have, every two weeks we have a meeting. Now remember when I, when I've told about Firewise, it is a grassroots, so it is not Los Altos Hills doing the recognition. It is the residents themselves doing the recognition. They've, their zone, it has expanded from just the Saddle Mountain specific community to being all of the new Zone Haven, LAH 005 is their designation. So in that, we have various roads that are collaborating together. We have 10 to 12 people who are in the initial all-in doing their own personal surveys. In fact, I was just answering a home hardening question about vents today. One of the residents sent pictures. One of the residents was able to keep their insurance because they knew how to speak and walk around with their insurance agent. So they were not non-renewed after 30 years. They were going to be non-renewed and they were able, because of what they've learned and integrating some of that, that language and that information of what they've done to convince the insurance company to keep them insured. So it's those, those, those residents are learning to be self-resilient, even to the point of being proactive. So that's what's coming out of that grassroots is the education, which is one of our main pillars of our district is to educate. They're, they're doing work around their yards. They were already doing that, but they're doing that even at another level. And they're encouraging their neighbors. So we're going to continue to support them. We hope to have their survey and their risk plan done here this month. And then they get online, open up an account and go through the NFPA, which is a national organization that will recognize them for being fire wise. Then from there, they establish a three-year plan, which involves community education every year. And they will set goals for themselves and they hope to have their recruitment as one of their goals and get as much as of that community of the Zone Haven area of LAH 005, part of their Firewise community. So that's the update. If there's any questions on that, I'll be glad to take those too. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Captain. All right. Any further questions from the commission? Any questions, comments from the public? All right. Thank you. We will now move to item 11, Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Projects and Proposals. Item 11A is an update on the Moody Road, El Monte Road project. Captain Bluehand, please provide the update.
Well, I think I pretty much gave it to you already. So the only other update is that we are working on more proposed areas. Dave and I are working on integrating the fuel braking with the road hardening on multiple levels. You've heard about the 280 in the budget. We have the South District that fits into some of the shaded fuel braking where we're looking at residential parcels that are strategic along Moody Road. We're talking, whoever mentioned the Hidden Villa. We're working on some other strategic parcels that will integrate in with that fuel brake. So that's kind of the update in general on the the evacuation route specifically. And then hazardous fuel reduction projects that we have also that we're looking at is education, more education projects around Zone Haven and using that traction to have residents participate in all these programs that we've talked about on the, the different layers tonight. So that's kind of where we're moving forward is to continue that education and get the, the residents engaged in all these programs that we're having the hopes to offer. So unless there's anything else from General Manager Logan or, or Dave on that, I'm going to turn it over.
Anything further? All right.
Thank you.
No hearing none? All right. Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Hearing none? All right. We will now move to item 11B, which is an update on the ad hoc CWPP IHFR Subcommittee. Commissioner Sreen, Roger, you got a lead on this?
That would be me, yes. I read documents up. So the ad hoc Subcommittee on Hazardous Fuel Reduction Programs met, was it yesterday? That's Commissioner Tyson and Kearney and myself. And obviously a lot of it was reviewing some of the material you've already heard tonight. Won't go over that. But there are two items that we created recommendations and want to bring back to this commission, I will discuss. And then one other update, I think will be of interest. So the two major items. The first one is one you may have heard of a lot and one, the second one you may not have heard of. The first one is about the, the equipment purchases. We've referred to it before, but we discussed this in our Subcommittee about, you know, the purchase of the mower and the masticator and the trailer. We had a lot of discussion with Dave about it. The key things being that there are more details about how such a purchase would work, how we would work with our collaborating neighbors who would want to use that equipment, how we would, how the training would work, what agreements we'll have to come up with to work with them and so forth. But we did, in discussing how we would learn how to do that, we made a recommendation as a Subcommittee that we would like this commission to direct staff to bring back agreements for the purchase of that mower in this fiscal year for mower, masticator and trailer at our next available meeting, which will be in January. So again, we as a Subcommittee felt it was a good purchase. There's a lot of work to be done around that purchase, but this will give, this direction would allow staff to start putting some of that work together, some of the work on the agreements and start that process going. So I think that's what we'd like to have some direction from the commission as well tonight. Before I move on, we'll stop with that. I see there's any discussion on that and see if such a direction is possible. Again, you've heard about it several times. There's probably nothing new in that recommendation. And I do see that there's a public comment, but it's not for me to necessarily to allow public comment. I would leave that to the president. Though I'm, I'm not averse to having that at this time.
Roger, I just, I'd just like to recognize Michael Gorman from MidPen here. And I appreciate him joining us and being available to answer questions as we potentially, any questions come up regarding the equipment purchase, the agreement, the storage, the training. Again, thank you, Michael Gorman, for coming and representing MidPen in this meeting.
You're very welcome, Dave. Thank you for inviting me.
Is there a comment from the commission? Mark, President Warren, I'm happy to allow public input at this
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
For Alan?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm certainly in favor of the district having the availability of this type of equipment. I guess my question relates to how is the district going to decide what equipment to buy? Who's the expert that's going to recommend the specifications for, for the equipment to buy? And then as far as operations are concerned, who's going to be? I wouldn't think anyone in the district would be trained to operate the equipment. I would imagine that equipment would be used by outside contractors or, or partners and who's going to be responsible for maintaining and storing and keeping the equipment? Thank you.
Dave, can I turn those over to you?
Sure. I appreciate your question, Alan, and I thank you Commissioners for, for taking this time. I'll be, I'll be brief because we have to go through the procurement process. We've developed a spec and working with MidPen, they already have used a piece of equipment and use equipment on the Mora Trail project, which they had rented before. So we have these masticators, which a masticator and a mower, remote controlled, that we would specify, go through the procurement process. And then with that procurement, we were better able to answer some of the maintenance questions. The agreement question between MidPen, who has agreed to store it. It would be owned by the district. So right now, the mower, the masticator and the trailer have resulted in the, from the Los Altos Strategic Fuel Brake discussions. So this has been, was initially brought forward in terms of what equipment they need, what they use. This collaborative approach has resulted in determining these initial pieces of equipment, which would be most useful for them. So right now it would be MidPen, MidPen staff. And then as we consider other agencies, if they were to request it, that would an individual agreement with them would come into place. The vendor would handle the training of MidPen staff and, and also myself and Denise as well. So that way we are able to supervise people that are using it in the future. And then out of that would come a training plan, a training curriculum with defined terminal objectives and a video potentially with our videographer. So that way we have a documented curriculum that was required for, you know, injury and injury and illness prevention. So we have an initial plan. First is specing procurement process, determining what it is, specifically talking with the vendor, determining the maintenance and the agreement there. So there's more to come in these details. But there's been a tremendous amount of collaboration and, and work. And I think we're prepared to move forward with this. Michael, would you like to add anything?
If, if I could just jump in, this is agendized as a report from the Subcommittee. Commissioner Sreen's asked for direction from the commission to report back. I feel like having more discussion on the specifics of this one item goes a little beyond just a report of the Subcommittee or request to bring the item back.
All right. So I think the, the advice, you guidance here is, is we need to bring this back for further agenda, as a agenda item for the January meeting.
That would be my, that would be my preference. I appreciate the question from the public and the question of the response, but as we get more into this specific item, we're a little bit far removed from the, just a report back on the Subcommittee and their reports. I think Commissioner Sreen made it clear that all he was looking for was direction to staff to prepare an item to bring it back.
Correct.
Having a discussion at
Full discussion. Okay, let's do that then. Bring it, let's, let's agendize it and bring it back for a full discussion in January.
Thank you. Thank you also for the details, Dave. That's also, it is very helpful. Appreciate that. Second item, and I may also turn to staff to help this description. We spent time discussing some upcoming changes to the district's chipping program, which is pretty exciting. I'm going to use Denise's term, which I would like. Essentially, the, the chipping program is going to turn into a no-zone chipping program. So instead of, and this is really an advancement for residents to make this program available monthly as opposed to semi-annually. So that no matter where you are. And this is exciting because it's really, it's created by the technology that's been brought into play to be able to schedule this out. This is really an, an operations issue. And this shows a real improvement that's going to bring some significant improvement to our residents. And by the way, to me personally as well, because I'm waiting for the next six month phase to come by for my next pickup. So if I can hand it to Denise to just give a little description of this, what, how this would work and what this means.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. So basically, and I have Jay Logan to contribute us. When we initially started out, you know, we being the district, you know, 10 years or 11 years now into the chipping program, it was very much administratively, you know, cards and mailers. Well, obviously last year we jumped into the age of technology and had online registration along with the mailers for the more traditional, you know, comfort level. We're trying to transition to obviously the more electronic. We've added a software program that we've been beta testing through the last few months and that does routing and planning of the chipping. It correlates all the information. It correlates all the information we receive and puts that in for the, the vendors. So the idea is that now that we've moved into more of a technologically advanced format and platform, let's go ahead and make this, because our goal is to remove vegetation. Let's make this as easy and simple as we can, and that was one of the ideas that Jay and Sarah had come up with, is to just take away the area management. Because the scheduling, a lot of the things get confusing. The software program can make an efficient route for the contractors. And they could, like Commissioner Sreen has already said, you can, you can ship whenever you need to. And we get a lot of out-of-area shipping, so someone forgets or, or has, does a big amount of work. And then we kind of have to special handling, and it takes a lot of staff hours. We think that ultimately, after the initial six months of, of transitioning, we have a plan for transitioning where they'll still get mailers for the first six months in the six zones or the six original areas, so that they'll understand the changes that are happening. But we think that it'll simplify this process and give more opportunity to remove vegetation. Let me let General Manager Logan, if there's anything also that I missed.
I think between you and Roger's description, that pretty well talks about this recommended change. And, and the staff is, is very eager to do it, and that's to go to a district-wide chipping program, defensible space chipping every month. We will put some boundaries around it so it doesn't become a program that looks like a green waste program pickup, that it truly is for defensible space. And by defensible space, I mean all, all of the property, all of the, the, the branches and, and vegetation hazardous fuel on the property, not just not the, the zone around the home. So that's what we're planning on doing, and, and I, we're very excited to start it in January of 2020. 2022, I think that will work out. Thank you.
And as a Subcommittee, we just, we agreed that we endorsed these changes, and it seemed, they seemed totally positive. We had nothing negative about it all. We're quite excited about it. So I want the whole commission to understand that, and we love that it's being working, it's being implemented now. Any comment on that?
Yeah, let's get a sense, make sure that the commission supports the, this change in the, in the, in the program. Any feedback from the other commissioners? George's thumbs up? Joan's thumbs up? Kavita's thumbs up? Terry's thumbs up? So it sounds like that there's, you know, I'm thumbs up, too. I am, so I'm supportive of this change in direction. Alan, well, to bring public comment in at this point. Alan, you got a, you have a comment?
I think it's wonderful to offer such a program. I don't know whether there'll be limitations on the number of times a user can use it. But I will say, operationally, I think it will be much less efficient, and it will drive up the cost of the program. The reason, one of the reasons for doing it in a area basis was that there's tremendous efficiencies. The driver, when he went from my house to the house next door, spent little time driving and most of his time chipping. Now, if you have a day come along when it's, they want to do my house and a house at the other end of Los Altos Hills, you're going to spend 25, 30 minutes driving to the, driving to the next property. So yes, it's very convenient for the resident, but I think it's going to be inefficient from an operations standpoint and drive up costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Yeah, I appreciate the concerns on that. I, I think that's mitigated by the fact that, as was mentioned, the software is now going to provide convenient routes. And from the, what I've seen in my neighborhood, just anecdotal, you know, the time spent at the job is more significant than the time getting here. And I've seen several other large neighbors with large amounts of waste to be chipped. That, that the time spent between was not a major part of the job. So if it is reasonably efficient and reasonably direct, I think that the ability for, to not have to wait six months for a pile of stuff to be, to be growing is just a huge boon for the residents. Just my thought. But I see Denise has her hand up.
I just missed one point, too. Another reason for, for this is we, we have seen a very large increase in the monthly participation. So in this, we, if we need to, we're going to have two vendors. So again, efficiency will be looked at in that. If we get amounts that are, are too large for one vendor for one week, we'll have two vendors. We also want to keep more vendors bidding because we want to have such a robust program that we get that competitive bidding and that we keep continuing to have multiple vendors bidding on these contracts. So that regularity and the ease is not just the ease for the resident, it's also the ease for the contractor because there's a big plan laid out for them, and they go to those. They're getting used to who they're responding to because we do have generally the same vendors that are supplying a lot of our contracted work. So we're hoping that we have increases in participation, as we've seen over the last few months, continuing year-round. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Let's see, I think I had, those are the two major items from our, to the county meeting. I'm trying to think the, we've been over the El Monte project. Well, oh, the, the one thing we wanted to mention that came out of that status update was that, and I don't think this was mentioned earlier, that the staff is really planning to do four of those El Monte Moody-type projects every year. I think I'm being that correct. So I just want people to understand, if you see the scale of what's going on in Moody, El Monte right now, picture that four times a year, and that was very impressive to me. That's, that's the kind of, of activity going to be going on all the time. I think those are, those are the major items you wanted to hit. With that, I'll conclude the report. Though Commissioners Kearney and Tyson are welcome to add any comments that I may have forgotten.
George, Terry? All right.
As usual, Roger has a good grasp on things, and I agree with his complete commentary.
Derek, anything?
I agree entirely with that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Subcommittee. If there's no further questions or comments from the commission and seeing nothing else from the public, we will now move to item 13, which is the Personnel Subcommittee, their personnel topic. Item 13A is the Third Amendment to the Los Altos Hills County Fire District General Manager Employment Agreement with Jay Logan. District Clerk Vargas, please introduce the item.
This agenda item is to discuss and take possible action to approve a third amendment to the at-will General Manager Employment Agreement between the district and Joanne Logan. The proposed third amendment is included in the District Board of Commissioners' agenda materials for this item. The proposed third amendment extends the employment agreement term by one year to December 31st, 2022, and includes compensation for the general manager, including salary and other fringe, fringe benefits. California Government Code Section 54953, subsection C, subsection 3, requires that the commission, I'm sorry, requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to, to adopt that compensation here by approving the third amendment. The proposed third amendment includes the following compensation. Wages: The proposed third amendment increases the general manager's salary by 3% to $213,313 effective January 1st, 2022. Benefits: Under the proposed third amendment, the general manager will accrue three weeks of paid vacation in 2022. This is the same amount of vacation that the general manager is accruing in 2021. All other compensation and benefit terms remain the same. The employment agreement does not provide holiday pay, medical benefits, or retirement benefits to the general manager, and that's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, Corey. So appreciate you introducing the item. For the rest of the commission, I led this effort to get this amendment in place. I touched base with Roger, Commissioner Sreen, who is the other member of the Personnel, Ad Hoc Personnel Subcommittee. He was aligned with what we proposed, and he's supportive. And so, and I was worked with County Council and General Manager Logan on this amendment to get it to this point. And so thank you, everyone, for helping to bring this along. So are there any que, so what we'll do is we need a motion to approve this before we, any questions before we, we ask for a motion to approve the second, third amendment, excuse me? Seeing none? All right. Let's move to a motion and a vote. Tyson moves?
Expressing my thanks for, for General Manager Logan's work, and I want to express my appreciation for the leadership she's provided and how grateful I am that we have such a fine organization to present to the rest of the county as we've been doing this last year.
Thank you, George.
And I second that motion and those comments. Great job, Jay.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Terry. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
I thirded the motion.
Third motion? Only on this servant, appreciated. Any public comment? Seeing none, District Clerk Vargas, let's move on to the roll call vote.
President Warren?
Definitely approved.
Commissioner Kearney?
Wholeheartedly approve.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Sreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka? Kavita, I didn't hear.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And Commissioner Tyson?
Unreservedly approved.
All right. And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Very good. Jay, thank you very much for accepting the amendment and agreeing to work with us for another year.
And I am honored. Thank you very much for your kind remarks and energy that I felt with this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the staff for working with me and putting all this together for the community.
Great. All right. We'll now move to item 14, Commission Member Reports. This is an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports or any future agenda topics. Are there any comments from commissioners at this time? Not seeing any? All right. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? And hearing none. We'll now move to item 15. This concludes the November 16th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at 9:25 PM. The next meeting will be via Zoom in January of 2022. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Mark.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.